Secretary, please call roll.
Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Kendra Barberina is here. Tim Boyd. He is here.
He is here.
He must have stepped out.
He has stepped out.
Bob Dorshavitz is excused. Gail Greger.
Here.
John Idzal.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
And do we have approval for the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Postel to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And do we have the motion to approve our minutes of November 17?
Mr. Chairman, I do have just a couple of very minor changes. Application 2410, the rezoning for Plymouth Ridge condos, and number 2412, the Calis Enterprises. The fire department report was also received.
Is there support as amended? Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Idzal to approve November 17 minutes as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the Application 20 Oh, yes, thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak before the commission on a non-agenda item? You do? Okay, if you step up and give us your name and address, if you wish.
Hi, everybody. Eric Hirlings, 46830 Betty Hill, in the Glenview neighborhood at Beck and North Territorial.
Might get closer to the mic. Yeah, I don't know if your mic is on. Can you see a red light?
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. Can you hear them? Yeah, you can barely hear them.
I'll try to speak up.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, my goal today is to expand on topics that I shared with this planning commission last June 2021. During that meeting, I recommended that the master plan 2025 should include e-mobility solutions, as suggested by state agencies at michiganmobility.org and michiganbusiness.org/ofme. Here are a few items to prove my point that in the six short months since I last spoke, these future electrified transportation topics I raised have only increased significantly. In December 2021, the average transaction price of a new vehicle in the US was $47,000. For this 2022 model year, there are 14 EVs with an MSRP below that price, yes, before any tax credits, from 11 manufacturers: Ford, maybe you've heard of the F-150 or the Mustang, Chevy, Tesla, Audi, Nissan, Volkswagen, Polestar, Hyundai, Kia, Mini, and Mazda. Two of those vehicles are in the 20,000s, six of them are in the 30,000s. You may wonder, Eric, why are you sharing facts about vehicles that not every American wants to buy right now? Three things: the falling cost of technology, along with supply and demand, prove that EVs are not only just for the rich anymore. Two, as a licensed professional engineer, I am responsible for designing public infrastructure to meet the needs of society. Three, this planning commission has the opportunity and responsibility to oversee the zoning ordinance. Three things stated in the title and purpose of the zoning ordinance strike me as relevant: regulate the use of land and structures; two, meet the needs of the state citizens for food, energy, and other natural resources; three, facilitate adequate and efficient provisions for transportation systems, energy, other public service and facility requirements, and to promote public health, safety, and welfare. As an aside, couldn't we encourage health and recreation by installing EV chargers at parks, rather than just at fast food restaurants and the like? I also noticed that the wind energy addition was back in 2011, but not much has been added since then. To be fair, the Tesla Model S wasn't even out until June 2012. But in case you hadn't heard, Tesla delivered 936,000 vehicles last year and is by far the highest-valued automotive manufacturer in the world. Would you agree that things have changed in the last, since 2011? I think the time has come for zoning ordinance updates to address the infrastructure in this package. Four copies of. Three things, I know my three minutes are almost up: electric vehicle charging infrastructure, solar panels, solar photovoltaics, and battery storage infrastructure and portable battery charging stations. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Have you submitted your comments? On the, we have a website for comments for the master plan?
I believe the last time I spoke, there was a comment period that had already passed. I'd be happy to submit my comments. If there's a website I can be provided, yeah.
Ms. Hall, is it still available that he can cut? Yeah, it's still available. I would suggest you do that.
Yes, please do.
And I hope that you can look through the packet I passed out. There's a lot of interesting products coming to market already, already available that are, they don't fit the mold of zoning ordinances, generally speaking. So I think it's something to look at and strongly consider. And I think you guys should formally recommend that we update three of those ordinances this year, as it's highly, highly relevant.
Thank you.
One comment I could I believe the 900,000 Teslas is a global number.
Correct.
And the US number was estimated by Audubon News to be, I want to say, just over 300,000 this year.
Apologize if I said US. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Today, we have application 2414 on the Inn at St. John's is the applicant here. You're here? Okay. Alright, I'll ask Ms. Hall to read her report.
Thank you, Chairman Sabolski. Will we want to open the public hearing first, or?
Well, usually what we do is we hear your report and the engineering report, and then
Then you open it.
The applicant will make their presentation, and then we open up for public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. The application before you is an amendment to an existing planned unit development, a PUD. And this proposal includes significant renovations to the existing Inn at St. John's facility at the southwest, southeast corner of Five Mile and Sheldon Road. In addition to the interior renovations to the existing banquet conference center, the applicant is proposing a 14,000-square-foot ballroom and entry garden addition, a 5,000-square-foot ceremony pavilion, and approximately 4,000 square feet of new retail space for the pro shop. There's also some additional parking and landscaping improvements that are being proposed at this time. The additions will be primarily south-facing of the existing facility, and we don't see any detrimental impacts, especially due to their location. Our recommendation is on page six of our report, where we recommend that the planning commission recommends approval to the Board of Trustees to amend the existing 2005 PUD to allow for the proposed expansion and additional structures as they are aligned with the current use of the facility.
Your three minutes are on.
Trying to keep it fast. The proposed uses are aligned with the current use of the facility and the intent of the original PUD agreement. If the planning commission makes a recommendation tonight to the Board of Trustees, they would then consider this amended PUD, and the applicant would be required to submit an amendment to the 2005 recorded PUD contract. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the engineering report?
On site currently, there are already infrastructure in place for water main and sand tray sewer, both looking around the existing building and in the parking lots. The proposed changes on site wouldn't change much for the infrastructure there. Any additions for the stormwater improvements will have to be approved through the Wayne County approval process. And at this time, not much is mentioned in the PUD amendment for proposed work, but we just mentioned that any additions to parking areas or driveways have adequate space and turning movements for emergency vehicles. And our recommendation is also to offer by this time for the PUD amendment.
Okay, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
And then we, the applicants received a communication from the fire department, where they found no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. So this applicant can come up and share any words you wish to share with the commission and
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to have reviewed our proposal, and certainly we're excited about being here and excited about what's going to happen in the next 12 to 16 months. My name is Francis Resendez. I'm the managing principal for Resendez Design Group. They have been engaged by the Inn to oversee all this work, both design and construction. The first phase, obviously, as you see in the applicant, is to do a ceremony pavilion, which we have an aggressive schedule, but we're excited about getting started. Within the main ballroom and the renovations of the existing dormitory buildings, which have been, you know, not used for many, many years. So it's great to do adaptive reuse work. We do a lot of historic preservation, and we're excited that the Polte family has hired us to do this work. Again, we have with us, obviously, Paul Wiegert, the hotel manager. And I'm happy to have my son with me as well to kind of help kick this project off, as he just recently graduated from Lawrence Tech. So it's an exciting time for us, and we've reached out to both fire and building and planning, and we're trying to obviously be proactive in this endeavor. Because as I said, with long lead times on materials and that, we hope to get a lot of this kicked off. So we're excited that the project is well-received.
I just have a few words, first of all. You know, I think people in Plymouth Township appreciate the Inn at St. John's and the investment that has been made by the Archdiocese of Detroit and Mr. Polte, when they were involved in its redesign and repurposing of it. We always considered it a jewel of the township. And I'm, from just a cursory examination of your plans, still at the early stages, it appears that you're also going to be following in that same vein of preserving and enhancing what's already there. So we truly do appreciate that. I have one question I'd like to get out, and I'm glad to hear you say you've done some historical restorations. Are you familiar at all with Corrado Perducci or Andrew Mottella and their contributions to St. John's?
I am not at this time, no.
Okay, I suggest you kind of look into that. Corrado Perducci, most people never have really heard of him, but he was brought to Detroit from New York by Albert Kahn. And he was an architectural sculptor. And he did many of the sculptures that you'll see at the Inn at St. John's, primarily above the entryway, you know, the main entryway, and some of the side entryways that you'll see there. I bring that, him particularly, up because when I looked at the plans, I don't believe you'll be touching any of the carvings and things that he has in there. He's also done the ceiling in the main hallway, you know, as you enter through the main gate. But what I see you're proposing sometime in the future, if it happens, in addition to one of the ballrooms, it'd be the one on the west side. And it appears like it's going to be built between one of those wings and the old convent or the pro shop that it is now. And on that one wall, there are four square medallions of the four evangelists. So if you do get to that spot, you know, in your development, if there's a way, I don't know how tall your building is going to be or anything else, we're not in that level of detail. But I think if you could, if they could be easily removed, or, you know, a glass wall or something put in there, that you would, you know, respect those carvings that are up there. Andrew Mottella did the mosaic that sits behind the altar piece. 400,000 squares of tile there. And he did some of the paintings. And I haven't been in the building for a while because of COVID. I think some of those, there were either mosaics or paintings that were in the dining hall that now are the two ballrooms. I don't know if those were covered up, but you may want to look at that as, I don't know where you are in the plans, you're going to enhance some of this stuff. But maybe you should contact the Arts Diocese Archives and take an inventory of where some of those artworks might be. Just as we ask people here to look at heritage trees, you know, we're concerned about trees. Well, we're concerned about history as well. So I think that would be a useful planning device on your part, and we can talk about that, depending on what you find.
I can assure this audience that I had the pleasure of having worked with Bill Polte.
Yeah.
And, and on many projects. And the Polte family's commitment to doing things right, I don't think that's a question. We're not there because they want to do things half-baked. We're, it's interesting you talk about the sculptures, because one of my first observations when I went on site was the sculpture and the statue, which would be the least location that most people would think, is in the barterhouse stack.
The one of the Holy Family?
Yes, in the back.
Yes.
And that's, I think Paul can tell you, the first minute I said, I said, "This isn't the back, this is the front." And so part of the design of the new ballroom is to completely redo what's referred to as the retreat center and completely open that up. So there really is no front and back to the building. And so we're looking at the whole complex as a whole, from one side to the other. And Mark Polte, of course, who's, you know, continuing his dad's legacy, is going to do it right.
I am very confident that I was very happy if the Archdiocese was going to sell the facility, that I went to an organization that appreciated what was there. And some of us remember when Mr. Polte appeared here, you know, with the repurposing. He took us on a tour, told us the substantial amount of money that was spent on the restoration of the ceiling and that, that main hallway, or, you know, whatever you want to call it. Out of curiosity, are you, has anything been done? Are you planning to do anything with what Mr. Polte called his secret chapel, which is in the basement in the old retreat center?
I don't have enough information at the time to even respond to it.
Oh, okay.
So it's a secret.
Well, that was really a secret. Maybe I wasn't supposed to say anything.
I'm not aware. And, you know, and on that note, I mean, we, the Archdiocese is very familiar with our work, and that's why we're also there. So it's really a phone call from very familiar people
Yeah.
that got us to where we are. And I think, Paul, we've, we've, we've kind of hit it out of the park, I think, with our response to a call. And it'll only get better from here.
Well, yeah, I'm sure. Well, we'll open up for public hearing and come back. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? I'll open the public hearing at 7:18. Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing at 7:19. Well, just one moment. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
I would just say that I can see no reason not to approve what you're asking for. It's a tremendous asset improvement to the community.
You agree? Anything else?
I have a question or two.
Sure.
Did you say in your remarks anything new about the former seminary rooms? The vertical hotels, not the hotel, but the seminary room structure?
Question.
Why say, is there anything new as far as you have the old rooms that served as seminary rooms? Are those being in touch at all right now?
That's going to be part of you, Paul, or Francis. Original, years ago, the Land Oath was demolished and dropped. Those dorm rooms, it's shut down probably about 10 years. Right now, most of those things is dorm rooms that become part of the ballroom where there'll be parts where, if you're in the ballroom, where actually there'll be big cloisters that are built.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking maybe about another part of the building, because there's, the building's big. So, yes, as Paul has said, the renovations of the existing dormitory facilities are very much an integral part of the design. So the original intent was to create, the main ballroom will basically be hugged by the Y buildings, as I call it, kind of embracing them. And new cloisters will be built. They'll wrap from both inside and outside and kind of surrounding the grand space. So if there is a new grand ballroom, that's going to be the grand ballroom. But also at night, the vision of looking up through the glass and seeing the tower. So it's two very different experiences from some of the current ballrooms, which are obviously gorgeous in and of themselves, but have a historical kind of nature to them. So we're trying to find that sweet spot between the pavilion space, which will feel very outdoorsy and open up, it'll have all glass doors that literally you'll feel like you're outside, while the new ballroom will also just embrace the old architecture.
Right. The question I would have is, so you've got on a functioning night, let's say a Friday or Saturday from spring to summer, you've got, at the moment, I think, three ballrooms capable of doing 200-seated dinners for receptions. You're going to double one of the rooms in size, from what I understand. On top of that, you've got a hotel. I don't know how many rooms are there, but it's certainly a large unit. And you've got a golf course operating, as well as a retail pro shop. At the same time, you're losing, I think it was 30 or 40 parking spaces.
Yes.
Can you come up to the mic, because the meetings are recorded and Excuse me.
So my name is Paul Wiegert, the managing director at the Inn at St. John's. I've been there 20 years. It's February next month. So I was very familiar with the property, with Bill Polte and that. The, when we ran it as a retreat center, I think there was 180 dorm rooms there. So that whole lower parking lot was the parking lot for those 180 rooms. So obviously, using it as a ballroom, we're not going to have those overnight guests that were there, so. And a lot of the corporate groups, when corporate comes back, it's a matter of, a lot of those groups will just have classroom breakouts in the different ballroom areas, where they could have a main meeting in the, in the new ballroom, and then have breakouts throughout the different other. We have four ballrooms, basically. We have the grand ballroom, the atrium, and then the two regal ballrooms. Your question on the art, I think you were talking about the Sea of Galilee mosaic, the mosaic that was done in the Galilee ballroom, that is still there and will remain there, so.
Do you have an inventory of, I'm talking more of this, I mean, I don't want to see an inventory of every piece of art that might still be there, but the structural stuff, the mosaics, or, you know, the reliefs that are over the doorways on the exterior of the building, that kind of?
None of that's leaving. The only thing that left was when the retreat center closed down years ago, the Archdiocese took some artwork out of there, and it's in the archives of the Archdiocese, so.
But those were more removable?
Yes.
Item. Yeah, I'm talking more, that's structural to the building, that.
Yeah, but, well, we're actually, during COVID, when we were closed down by the state requirements in 2020, I guess it was, we actually brought in 12 restoration artists in, and they totally redid all of the hallway ceilings, because if you remember right, they were falling apart.
Right.
There was never, it took them three or four months to do that. So we're actually restoring all of that stuff, so. And then they also restored all the sculptures that you're talking about around the columns and that. Those have all been redone as of last year, so.
Well, I'm confident it'll be respected, you know, I just, you know, want to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
No, the Polte and the Polte family is, you know, this is a legacy for their dad.
Yes.
And I don't know if the township knows, but after the sale happened, 100% of our profits are going to charity, so. That's, that's already been determined, so it's, when it was the Archdiocese, it went to the Archdiocese to help. The same thing's happening here, too, so.
Well, many of us do consider it a jewel for our community and are so pleased that there have been caretakers over the decades that appreciate it as much as we do.
I would be there for 20 years, so. I agree.
I still have a parking question or two. So you're going to double the size of the ballroom, one of the ballrooms, you're going to add an outdoor pavilion. You're potentially going to add another ballroom, and I guess, question?
I don't, you keep saying we're doubling the size of the ballroom.
Well, item D is future ballroom expansion.
Well, that's, that's the ballroom that we're building.
Right.
No, he's talking, I think, the one on the east side, north of, next to Carl's, and that one, that's a future.
The one by the convent, the old convent, the pro shop, I believe, is the one he's talking about, on the west side.
That's going to be, we're just expanding, basically, the pro shop's going to, we used to have the burger loft upstairs. We're going to have the restaurant downstairs where the pro shop is, and just building another pro shop beside that. So we're not expanding anything, no.
So what I'm getting to is, during your concourse d'élegance, you do a lot of shuttling. And if this was fully operational, based on this projection, like I say, you get into the spring and summer on a Friday or Saturday night with all your ballrooms full, do you anticipate having to shuttle people in?
No. Right now, we have four ballrooms. And I can guarantee from during the summer months, as you're saying, Fridays, Saturdays, those ballrooms are full with weddings, that whole lower retreat center parking lot's not even used, so, yeah.
Do you have more, or? I don't. Anyone else?
I just, as I looked at this plan, I commend you for how you've repurposed some of the facility, and you've repeated the architectural features in your new layout. This comes off as absolutely first-class and will only enhance an asset to the community, as Chairman Sabolski has already said. So I commend you for your proposal.
Paul Francis's fault. I will say that the pavilion, the ceremony site, will be for ceremonies where they'll leave that room and go to the ballroom to have their reception. So that's not an added room in my mind, and I think in parking, so.
It will be open air, some of it, the pavilion?
It's a four-season pavilion, but it will have the nano walls that will open up to allow fresh air and all that in there, so.
If there's a demand, would you use it in the off-season, the winter?
Oh, yes, yes. We do 250 weddings a year and, right now, and that was one of Francis's task was to, how is that room able to be used four seasons a year? So it will have full heating and air conditioning.
One time, didn't the St. John's Center have a steam plant?
It still does.
It still does.
Yep. We use steam to provide heat, because you have the, it allows some moisture in the air versus, I think, you know, you go to a lot of hotels that use electric heat, and then it's got the dryness in the air. We've always used steam for that area.
Above a major power plant, as a matter of fact, part of the ballroom, the main ballroom, will also have an additional tunnel just for all the infrastructure and all the things that happen that we all don't see during a wedding is all happening below ground. So it's, there's an exhaustive infrastructure below ground to, that is still powered by the power plant. So that, that So that, that won't go anywhere.
Do you project a phase sort of construction plan or will you start everything at once? Or, uh, how would you go about completing? Uh, you've got four distinct areas right now.
Yeah, so our, our initial step, which again, we've met with the township, is we're in the process right now to, uh, basically, uh, gut out the existing, uh, retreat building, the older retreat building. It's actually one of my least favorite buildings. If I, if I ever did tear a building down, that would be the building I'd tear down. Mark was opposed to it, but if I did take it down, that would be the one. It's just a, a bad block building that was put up. But having said that, it'll, it'll be better when we're done. Um, we're in the, in the process of, of really, uh, gutting out the existing buildings, uh, the, the Y buildings and the retreat building. And part of that is so that we can expose everything, that we can possibly expose before we finish our drawings for final review. We don't, you know, we don't like surprises. Clients don't like surprises. Uh, so we, we're, we, because we do a lot of this investigative work upfront, prepare the documents so we're not having to do things two or three times. So that's in, in process of, of moving forward. Um, as we do that, um, then we'll develop details that are sensitive to, again, the character of the building versus being heavy handed with a set of drawings that we impose on the architecture.
How many stories are the, uh, dorms?
There are three, but they have a, a lower level that has a partial walkout area. Uh, matter of fact, if you look closely, part of the re-adaptive reuse is that we're removing this little Tudor style building that was the golf cart storage building. Not so sensitive. We have a little other tent building next to it. Both of those buildings will go away. And that, that infrastructure will actually go in underneath in the basement lower level of the existing dormitory building.
We actually add the parking lot to that too.
And, and, and we are adding parking in lieu of with the landscape area. So we're addressing the shipping and receiving area in that location as well. So we're actually removing buildings that are not as sensitive as we would have liked them to be. Uh, and, and embracing more of the existing square footage that was already there. Well, they really, I mean, at the end of the day, you shouldn't really feel that you're, this is the backside, this is the frontside. It's all beautiful, no matter where you stand.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
There's a motion to, uh, go to the EOT.
Yeah, yes, I would say, uh, the, the motion should read to, uh, recommend approval of the amended PUD to the Board of Trustees, uh, subject to, um, conditions of the planner's report, which, uh, goes into detail of what, what standards were used.
Okay, um, motion to approve the, uh, PUD amendment, uh, to the Board of Trustees. And in, uh, in representative of, uh, the, uh, comments made by the, uh, planning document.
And, and engineering and.
And engineering, which I don't think were any.
They'll work out those details.
Yes.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Barberina to recommend, uh, approval of the amended PUD to the Board of Trustees for application 2414. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you and thanks for the investment in our community.
Thank you.
Next is application 2415 to Hagerty Road Undercover Self Storage. And with that, Ms. Howe, your report.
Thank you. This site plan application pertains to the vacant parcel at the southwest corner of Schoolcraft and Hagerty Roads, um, directly across from Obasto. Uh, the use is an outdoor RV storage facility with a small office building. The use, um, is a special land use, um, for the property that's zoned the industrial district. And back in November of last year, the planning commission did grant approval of that special land use. And the applicant has proceeded with their site plan. Our recommendation is on page seven of the report. And based on the compliance, um, so far with the zoning ordinance, especially, um, when looking at all the dimensional requirements, we do recommend that tentative site plan approval be granted for the RV storage facility. However, we recommend that, um, eight items are addressed before the applicant submits for final site plan consideration. So this would be that a land combination is filed for and approved. There are two parcels that comprise of the subject site today. Uh, the second is that the sidewalk along Schoolcraft Road be extended to the west to align with the western edge of the, um, improved parking area. The third is that additional information be provided by the applicant on how or where any gray water, uh, wastewater would be discharged from RVs. That the striping of the parking stall depths be increased to 20 feet instead of 18. Uh, building colors and sample materials would need to be provided to the planning commission at that future meeting. Uh, sixth, uh, we recommend that additional design and architectural improvements are made to the proposed two blank facades. Two of the facades, two of the elevations, um, do have openings and articulation, uh, but two are blank. And given the location of that office building near the corner of the intersection, uh, that's especially important. Seventh is that the landscaping plan be revised. Um, there are a number of landscaping deficiencies which we call out, including the street frontage landscaping and the detention basin. And lastly, um, number eight, uh, condition that the fencing be decorative in that it wraps around the perimeter, um, so that it's clearly decorative from any viewpoints of the right away. Thank you.
Thank you. And the engineer, your report?
Uh, at this time, there is no concern, uh, for connection to existing utilities for either water main or sanitary sewer for the site. Uh, the store, for the storm drainage, uh, coordination will be needed with the, uh, county and Eagle Department to confirm that the, uh, outlet for the post detention basin is acceptable to the Rouge River. But at this time, uh, we recommend approval or the tentative and final site plan. And more comments will come during the, uh, full engineering review.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant's received, uh, a report from the fire department, uh, raising some issues that need to be corrected before they can get final approval from public safety perspective. And is the applicant here?
How you doing? Good evening. Uh, can you hear me? Jesse Parkinson with Green Tech Engineering. We're the civil and surveyor. Um, we're here with Mike Callis, the owner, Callis Enterprises. Uh, they own the existing facility, a couple doors down to the south on the same side of the road. Uh, this is to act as a, that place is pretty full, so we're, we're going to expand it and expand the operation, the outdoor portion of it. And, uh, this will be for, you know, boats and RVs. And, um, just in terms of the fire department, uh, I talked to them earlier today. Um, they had, uh, they, they had requested that we add a fire hydrant. So we're going to put that on the east side of the entryway and, um, that should satisfy their comment. Um, so we shouldn't have any issues as far as bringing water main in around the site. There's no need for that. They just need something close to the building itself. As far as all other comments, uh, that the planner, the planning, uh, report came back with, uh, we have no issues, no objections. We will comply. Uh, all but the sidewalk. The sidewalk, uh, on the plan, it shows as stopping at a certain point at which the grade just drops really hard down to the water. And, um, there's also a guard rail right there along Schoolcraft, so, uh, if there were some or a pedestrian pathway in the future to be extended to the west, there would need to be some, uh, great expense of a boardwalk or the removal and relocation of that guard rail. And, uh, the installa- installation of a sidewalk of some type. So, um, any questions with the plans? We were hoping to, um, go for preliminary and final, but not sure that that's even an option.
Ms. Howe, did you have any issue with the sidewalk issue that he's raised?
Well, I, I understand the challenge with that. Um, I think the concern is that if the, the sidewalk isn't developed now, um, then there's always going to be potentially a gap, um, in that. I suppose you could make it conditional upon the development to the west. When that's developed, the applicant would need to connect into the sidewalk if one is, if one is developed on the west side.
So he wouldn't have to put the sidewalk in until there's a development to the west? That, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
He would need to put the sidewalk in as proposed on the plans, but, um, the, the gap where they don't want to put the sidewalk because of the grade change, that would remain as is until the development proposed the sidewalk on the west and then they would need to be connected.
But questions from the commission?
What, uh, type of, uh, architectural improvements were you contemplating on the side of the building?
Well, currently, right now, those two elevations are, uh, 100% um, just blank facades. So any sort of, um, vertical or horizontal articulation, um, in opening, um, some transparency, even if it's fake windows, um, would give a, a nicer impression of an, of an office building.
Sprandl wa- windows might be a good, uh, do you have any issues with putting sprandl windows in?
No, I, I really don't. I mean, if we, we need to add a few windows to it, we can do that. Whether or not, but I mean, if that's, you know, if that's a have some extra windows put in there. It's in the garage area of the building that I'm proposing to construct. But we can put a couple more windows in. It's not, not the end of the world.
Well, the sprandl windows wouldn't, I don't think would be a security issue because they're a fake window. So there's, it's a solid wall. It's just, looks like there's a window there. You, you would see it here at the CBS store, right here on the corner. They have them. Looks like a second story. And they're just there for, you know, an architectural feature.
My, my point in bringing this up was just to get an understanding of what, what your, uh, ideas were to, uh, put the details in and if that was going to be something that they would, uh, not, uh, fight about.
Well, it would be very acceptable to do something with it. I mean, if the commission wants something, we're more than, more than happy to, you know, to make it happen.
Is this site adjacent to your current indoor site?
No, it's, uh, two doors south, or, or two doors north, I'm sorry, two lots north. You have Hagerty Metals and you have, uh, the Hagerty Storage guy there that does the concession trailers and then this piece of property.
Kind of bookend on the corners.
Right, this is right in the corner, yep.
And, uh, you are proposing a building that will have public restrooms as far as when you have, um, your new facility?
Yeah, there'll be a restroom in the office, yes.
Available to public or just office?
Well, just for the customers, yes. They maybe use it, sure.
And how long are the individual spaces roughly?
Um, they vary. Some are 20, some are 25, some are 30, some are 50, some are 40.
None of them are covered?
No.
Anyone else at that end? Over this end? What do you think about, uh, just, uh, or I'll ask Ms. Howe first. What do you think about, uh, final or?
Pardon me?
No, I'm asking the planner, her thoughts on, uh, preliminary or final?
Our recommendation would be tentative and then, um, final review presented to you once these eight items have been addressed.
I think so too.
I think so too, I just wanted to cover that thought. Okay, if there are no further questions, is there a motion?
Um.
Go ahead.
I'll do it. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, approve tentative site plan review for application 2415, the Hagerty Road Undercover Self Storage, um, subject to the items in the McKenna report, the engineer report, and the fire department.
Okay.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supportive by Commissioner Boyd to grant tentative site plan approval to application 2415, subject to set conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, see you soon. Good luck. Next is a, well, let me put this away first. Next, we have the, um, approval of signage. Ms. Howe, you want to go over your memo with us?
Certainly. So this is, um, for a proposed ground sign approval, a monument sign at 46900 Court Street in the industrial district. The applicant was previously approved for wall signage, um, but they are requesting this monument sign that has a non-masonry base. And to complement their, uh, industrial, uh, modern design and logo. And non-masonry bases can be approved in the industrial district by the planning commission. Um, but the, the design of the sign must be, um, reviewed by this commission and found appropriate. The dimensional, um, standards, uh, they meet all those requirements and they're actually, um, the proposed sign is, is smaller both in size and height, um, than the maximum allowed for the district. So, uh, they comply with all of the, all of their standards, uh, aside from the masonry base. Thank you.
Okay. Is the applicant here? You would come up?
Good evening. Uh, Nathan Bertan, 4676 Freedom Drive, Ann Arbor. Just as a point of clarification from the beginning, the packet that is supplied in, at least the packet that I found on the website, is not the final revised drawing. Because I was asked to provide, because there are flagpoles, there was a landscape plan, I was asked to provide details on those and I do not see that here.
That may have just went to the building department.
I just want to make sure that when we review this, that all of that is covered.
So.
I mean, and I don't know if all of the commissioners have those details or I have them on my computer that I can pull up.
So Laura, what do we have here? Is, is, do we have what he submitted or?
Yes, I, I believe so. The, the information that's in your packet includes the flagpoles and the wall signage, which was granted approval separately. Um, and I believe the information that was provided to the building department for the permit itself, um, has the, the landscaping around the base of the signage and such. More of the, the construction details.
The other point I would bring up is that the most recent design is taller than what is in this packet. It has a second section underneath EOTech.
In between the base?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Is that what we have, Laura?
Well, it's, it's this, correct?
No, there's an entire separate company listed in between EOTech and the base.
Okay, so in that case, they, they're proposing some additional lettering, which we would need to verify meets the dimensional standards, but otherwise, it's the same, it's the same monument sign.
So wait, so there'll be another business name underneath EOTech and?
EOTech.
EOTech.
Yes. Um, the parent company of EOTech is I2G Systems. They will be listed on there as well. Only EOTech will light. I2G just wants to be represented. They do not want to be seen fully.
But EOTEC lighting will be backlighting?
Yes.
So, Laura, what is the noncompliant, just the last of the base, or has the base now been satisfied?
The base... The waiver that the applicant is requesting is because the base is not masonry. Otherwise, this would be a sign that would just go through the building department with a sign permit and would be approved.
But it's our discretion as to whether or not it needs to be masonry or not.
Correct.
And we have the non-masonry signs in that particular zoning district.
In the industrial district, correct?
Right.
In fact, if I may, directly across the street, there is a sign there that is fully metal. There is no masonry.
So, what's your pleasure? We've done these before. The size, the same, the actual sign, size, I'm a little confused about what we got and what's there. It's still the same, is that correct, Laura?
So, if it's slightly higher, they still have space because they're underneath the maximum that they could ask for.
But it would still comply with our zoning ordinance, except for not having a masonry base.
Correct.
But we've given allowances for other signs in that area without masonry bases, correct?
Correct.
Then I don't see what choice we have.
Could you define masonry base? I mean, these are rocks, stacked rocks around there, just... They don't have any mortar.
The base itself would need to be comprised out of decorative black brick or stone.
So, the only thing we're being asked today is whether or not he can put the sign up without the masonry base.
Correct.
The size of the sign and the lettering is all going to be handled by the building department as to meet the standards of the ordinance.
Correct. And currently, he's underneath, he's less than what the maximum.
Okay.
What is the material of the sign? Is it a...
It is mostly aluminum. It'll have a steel support pole.
But it's mostly what?
It's mostly aluminum.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was trying to just keep the mask on. It is mostly aluminum.
The base is aluminum as well?
Yes. It'll have a matte black finish because of what EOTEC makes. Everything they do has a matte military-grade finish, so we're making it all match. That's... It was just their preference.
Most of our commercial buildings would have a base that would be, for instance, the same brick that you have on the building. Is there a fundamental reason why you don't want to do that? Is it just the cost, or is there some other reason?
It's to match... They have a second facility in Traverse City, and they're basically trying to make everything that they do uniform and everything match, and this is the exact same configuration as Traverse City.
Laura, do you know approximately how many other signs we've allowed to have without the masonry base in that area? Is it one or five or... Any idea?
I would say there's probably... Since this zoning amendment was made to allow the planning commission to approve non-masonry monument signs, I think there's only been two or three. I can't speak to the number of cases that have gone to the ZBA to request modifications over the years, or the fact that there's probably some signs out there that are noncompliant and, you know, they're not legally conforming. They were illegally established.
Laura, from the ZBA over the last three and a half years, as far as I can recall, in most, if not all, instances, we've asked to do the masonry, and eventually, the companies have agreed to do that. We may have made an exception or two, but I can't recall specifically.
I think the industrial park at Five and Ridge has a non-masonry, right?
Correct, yes. That was true.
That seems to be popular because it conveys a more modern look than what a lot of businesses, particularly located in those industrial areas, like to project.
The ones that I'm thinking now that we may have granted would have repeated the materials that were on the building. So, you know, if it's aluminum features on the building, that would have been the same aluminum feature on the base. So, there was still some tie to the architectural feature, from what I recall.
I guess with the building that you want to match, you said is in Grand Rapids?
Traverse City.
Traverse City. Okay, so, far away, not across the street or adjacent to the building.
Sure. But, I mean, to be... Just to bring up examples of what's around it, there is, I believe it's Trescal, which is the next property towards Beck. They have a granite base, which doesn't feature anywhere on their building. Directly across the street, towards the railroad tracks, it's a fully aluminum base, and the building is completely brick. Matching the architectural features doesn't seem to factor into this particular industrial complex. I'm not sure why, but that there's nothing that matches in that complex.
So, your efforts to match the sign of the business in Traverse City is for branding?
Yes.
So, keep your brand consistent across markets?
EOTEC is a manufacturer of optics for military and police, so they're very recognizable.
I appreciate the effort to make their brand consistent.
Is the tenant or is the corporation you referred to earlier, being at the bottom of the sign, is that a sister company or a subsidiary?
It's the parent company.
Pardon me?
That is the parent company.
Ah, alright.
Is that the same company logo that's on the existing sign?
Traverse City.
No. When I drove by your facility today, there's an existing sign in the same space as what you're proposing here, but just a...
Yes, it is the same. It's just temporary.
Okay, but that logo at the bottom is the...
Yes.
Extra logo that would go on this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that on the sign in Traverse City?
Yes.
Well, we've done it before.
Right, we've done it before.
And it is a trend that more businesses like because they feel it's more contemporary, modern.
And I guess that's why we have the ability to...
Right.
To present.
And there's a certain branding aspect to it as well.
Yeah.
How would a motion... There's not an application number. How would a motion be made, if this is our reference?
Would say you just move to approve the... Either move to approve... I have to think about not having the masonry base or...
A waiver? Thank you.
Or just deny the sign because of no masonry base.
Would you move to approve the waiver?
Yeah, we would. Is it a waiver? Yeah, it's considered a waiver.
This comes here in the report. Is seeking a waiver from the commission?
Yeah, that's why I thought I saw that word somewhere.
So, I'd like to make a motion. Could I do this?
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
So moved based on what the chairman's description was.
Okay, so, just to make sure. So, we're... The motion is to approve a waiver for EOTEC signage to not have a masonry base, correct? Okay.
Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, move by Commissioner Edson, supported by Commissioner Greger to grant a waiver for the masonry base. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next is application 2410, the rezoning for the Plymouth Ridge Development. And the report was emailed to us, so hopefully you've made copies and you have them in front of you. And with that, Ms. Howe, we're ready for your report.
Okay, thank you. So, this application pertains to the 27 acres directly south of the North Ridge Church property at the intersection of North Territorial and Ridge Road. Going back to March of last year, an application for a conditional rezoning for this property from the R1E single-family residential district to the R1H single-family residential district was made, and the application was ultimately denied by the Board of Trustees. When a rezoning application is denied per the zoning ordinance, a new application for the same amendment shall not be accepted by the township for consideration for 365 days unless the planning commission determines that one of... One or more of three conditions have been met. The first is that there is a substantial change in circumstances. The second is that there's newer additional information available. And the third is that the proposed application is materially different than what was originally presented. So, in our review, we include the original March 2021 conditional rezoning plan, which called for 42 single-family lots. We included the November 2021 conditional rezoning plan with 37 single-family lots. And then we included the current proposal, January 2022 conditional rezoning plan, which proposes 30 single-family lots. And then, starting on page five of our report, we provide an analysis between those two, between the original and the current proposal. So, we've seen a decrease in the number of lots from 42 to 30, which is approximately 28%. The density of the site has been reduced from 1.5 to 1.09. The open space has increased. The dedicated preservation space has been increased. The perimeter setbacks have been increased from 35 to 50 feet. There has been an increase in the range of lot sizes and lot widths, although we did request some additional information be provided by the applicant. Access to the site has been altered. There's still two access points off Ridge Road, but before those two streets interconnected within the site, now they're just proposed as individual cul-de-sacs. One of the largest changes deals with the amenities on the site. So, originally, there were two usable open spaces. They were non-contiguous, though, and felt a bit disjointed. Now, they propose an internal connected pathway system through the open space, and they've also increased the open space at the southwest... Southeast corner, excuse me, of the site. They've also provided six dedicated guest parking spaces, which weren't currently... or weren't originally included. And then, moving on to page six, we do individual lot comparison. So, this is showing from the original plan, the current plan, what's required in the R1E zoning district, which it's zoned today, and then what's required in the R1H zoning district, and that's what's being proposed. And then, there's also a density comparison between the original proposal, the latest, the current proposal, and then what could feasibly be constructed on the site under conventional zoning requirements for each district, and then also under a cluster housing option for each district. So, I just want to note that if the property were rezoned to the R1H district and under a cluster housing, if that was approved, 46 lots is the maximum that could be constructed on the site. However, the applicant is submitting a conditional rezoning application, which would limit the maximum number of units on the site or lots to 30. So, they wouldn't be able to construct those 46. There are two options moving forward. The first was that the planning commission would approve the rezoning petition to be reconsidered, and if so, a second public hearing will be held by this commission, and a full review of the conditional rezoning would be conducted. The second option is for the planning commission to deny the petition, in which case, the applicant would be required to wait out the remainder of the 365 days until June 22 of this year, and then they would be able to resubmit under normal processes. Our recommendation is that, based on the analysis provided in the report and the reduction in the number of lots by 28%, and a density of just over one dwelling unit per acre, which is prescribed for this site in the zoning ordinance, in conjunction with the adjusted layout and increased open usable space and preservation area, we recommend that the planning commission reconsider the subject conditional rezoning petition. However, we also recommend that the applicant further refine and revise their conditional rezoning plan prior to a future submission of their application. We think there's still an opportunity to improve the site in terms of open space, reduction in pervious surface, and buffers to adjacent residential areas. Thank you.
The applicant is here. If we vote to approve with further discussions on the conditional part of the rezoning, will that result in another public hearing?
Yes.
So, in the beginning, I'm having a hard time with the language about... There was four, the first proposal had four different curb cuts or four different access points when you consider the church slash development. Is that correct? There was two for the neighborhood and two for the church. Now, it looks like it's gone just to a total of two. They share common entrance. So, one of the big differences in my book would be it's gone from four entrance points to two on Ridge Road. Is that correct?
The church property itself is not included within this proposal, so the current... The two drives that service the church today, those are to remain in either scenario.
Looking at the January 2022 rezoning plan, it looks like there's just two curb cuts on two.
Yes. On page four.
You can still see the two approaches for the... For the other two.
Oh, so we believe things that we say at four, much like the first proposal?
Yeah, that's my understanding. But I can't speak for the applicant.
The way I see it, going from 42 to 30 is a material change, and of course, I guess we're uncertain of the... If we're going from four access points to... But I wouldn't want to say I approve or I'm looking to approve the site plan as presented, but I do think it meets that criteria of there's been a material change.
Yeah, I think, Laura, I think your report is excellent in making it very clear that it is materially different from the prior application. it is materially different from the prior application.
28% reduction.
I really like how you put together the report.
I see some members of the audience here, are you here to have comments on this? It's not a public hearing, but since you've shown up, we always encourage people to comment if they have anything they wish to share with us. Yeah, if you do, just come on up, you know, you've given three minutes.
12320 Howland Park Drive in Plymouth Commons, and I guess I'm just saying I'm disappointed to have to be here again, because they had one opportunity to bring something materially different, and they didn't, and then the board, the Planning Commission extended them and let them come in with something else. So now if we say, okay, if this isn't good enough, what's gonna, you know, keep going on? I wish at that last meeting, it would have been an up or down vote. So as homeowners, you know, we understand it's somebody else's property, but we are just really, you know, we have our property butts up to that, and we want to make sure that, you know, the way it's zoned, we think it should stay the way it's zoned due to the master plan, due to, you know, the atmosphere in that area. So I'm just disappointed that we had to be here again, but I appreciate your time in looking into it.
Well, appreciate you coming to share your comments. Anyone else?
So to be clear on the timeline, they could, they could reapply if they wanted to present again in June, and if we started to go down this road of approval, it goes from this meeting in February, they wouldn't be able to clear the March Planning Commission meetings, that would make it April, correct? If they, as soon as possible, they could present again.
If they submitted an application this week, I believe we could, we would still have time to get that to the paper for the March, well, definitely for the March meeting, potentially for the February meeting.
Then if, depending on how that goes, and it would get remanded, if it, either way, it would go to the Board of Trustees.
Correct.
So that would take at least another month or two to get there, right? So February, March could be April, May.
Correct.
If it's on that pathway.
But they wouldn't be starting in June, they'd be starting in January. If they got approved today, so it gives them a, say, a five-month head start.
Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, they'd have to wait until June 22 to resubmit.
Right.
So they'd probably be looking at the August meeting to come before the Planning Commission, so seven-month jump.
Laura, when I looked at the new plot plan for the 30 lots.
Yes.
On all the lots except the ones that were on the cul-de-sacs, it appeared to me that the minimum lot width was 90 feet. But your chart indicates that the applicant had still set 80 feet on their application. Do you have an update on that, because that's, that's an important, not for tonight's discussion, but going forward, that's an important consideration.
I don't have confirmation from the applicant, the site plan, when you scale it, or the conditional rezoning plan, when you scale it, it is 90 feet, their site data table still says 80, though, so it's just, it's an item that they would need to correct.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll make a motion.
We're ready for a motion, then? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reconsider Application 2410, the rezoning map amendment for Plymouth Ridge condos, given that the new application is materially different than the original application, as described in detail in the McKenna Report dated January 12, 2022.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd, and let's do a roll call vote.
Dennis Sabolski?
Yes.
Kendra Barberina is yes, Tim Boyd?
Yes.
Bob Dorsovitz is excused, Gail Greger?
Yes.
John Idsel?
Yes.
Keith Postel?
Yes.
Motion carries. So you think this would be on the next month's agenda, if you can get it posted?
I will have to confirm with the applicant that that's their timeline, they would need to submit some additional materials.
Okay.
I'm disappointed that the applicant isn't here tonight.
I'm quite surprised.
Yeah, we've been through a lot with this, and the applicant's not here is very disappointing.
Us and the residents have spent a lot of time on this, and I do believe they should have been here.
Yes.
Laura, I know this is the standard process, but given the concern of the local community, can we please make sure that sign on Ridge Road gets updated with the new public hearing date right away, quick, and also just double-check to make sure that all of the people that are within 300 feet of the proposed development get their standard planning, public hearing notice? I know that's the process, but particularly with the sign, I want to make sure it gets updated right away. Thank you.
Good point.
But you can't update it until you know the meeting, they're ready to present that. It'd have to be a real quick turnaround.
Until the public hearing is that, right?
Once they know when it's going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
For the public hearing.
But is it, the date that's on the sign now, it's already passed, isn't it?
It's, the sign still says November 17.
November 17.
So there would be no confusion.
Right, like, there's still a sign for public hearing at the property on Annaba Road and McLumpa, on the northwest corner there, that one is still there as well.
Yeah, that one should be taken down, also, it's all crooked, it doesn't make a very good statement about the township.
Is there an ordinance on how long they have to leave that sign up after the public hearing has been taken care of?
I, yes, there is, I want to say it's 15 days.
Oh.
So it's been 15 days, for the one on Annaba Road and McLumpa.
Was in October, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to election of officers, I had spoken to a number of you, and some of you have called me about the election, and I was going to send an email out, but I didn't want to be accused of violating the Openness Meeting Act, and even though this doesn't impact, you know, the public, but it appears that, as you know, we lost Bill Pratt, you know, a few months back, and so we decided at that time we were going to merge the vice chair and secretary positions together until we had an opportunity to have some of the newer commissioners gain some experience here. And unfortunately, there hasn't been a groundswell of people coming forward to take on any one of these positions. Kendra, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, so correct me if I'm, you know, misinterpreting what you have told me, that she still serves in those two positions, she would prefer just to be the secretary rather than do both. So I'm proposing that we suspend the bylaws for a period of one year, so that we would just have the vice chair and secretary positions, and Kendra is still willing to do that, I'm willing to step back if somebody wants to be chair, but it's unlikely if no one wants to be vice chair. So that's sort of where we stand on the officers for this coming year, so are there any comments on that? Makes a lot of sense.
I have every faith that in the future, these positions will be filled by fantastic people, because we have some great new commissioners, just takes some time.
Yeah, we're just sort of in a...
Just in a situation right now.
Yeah, so for a year from now, for sure, we're going to have to do that, so I think, first, if we would have a motion to suspend the bylaws for the positions of vice chair and secretary being one, and then that would enable us to have the election. Okay, I'll make a motion to suspend for one year the, now, let's see. The bylaw provision. The bylaws to requiring that there be a separate position for vice chair and secretary. Is there support?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Greger to suspend the bylaws for one year, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the nomination is open now for chair.
I would like to nominate Dennis Sabolski as chairman of the Planning Commission, he does a fantastic job, and we would be lost without him.
And you want me to stay healthy?
Yes, absolutely.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Postel. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there an offer to, or a motion to approve the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I abstain, and thank you very much. And then finally, a motion for the election of the vice chair and secretary.
I'll make a motion that we nominate Commissioner Barberina to be vice chair and secretary of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Greger and supported by Commissioner, it was Boyd, yeah, Commissioner Boyd. Are there any other nominations? Okay, is there a motion to approve Commissioner Barberina to be vice chair and secretary? In favor, say. Motion to approve. Motion, okay, and while we have that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll abstain.
Okay. Any comments from the commission?
Thank you, everyone, for your faith in me.
Well deserved.
Any commissioner comments?
Do we have to do the planning and zoning monthly report, or just receive and file?
Well, we didn't, did you receive one in your packet?
No.
Is there a report for this month?
There was one, yes. I'll make it.
Oh, okay.
So we'll do it at the next meeting?
Next meeting, which will be updated from this month.
Is there any change at all, is there any change that stands out, anything worthy of discussion?
Not that we're doing a monthly report, just upcoming, next one's meeting, we'll have the commissioner review the annual.
Okay, that's my question.
And it's also some redevelopment.
Good. Could we have an update on the master plan, the timeline for that?
Yes, I need to check back in on that, because I'm not sure how much time, we've gone over how much time we need to legally provide for it, so need to review any comments and then bring that back to the commission.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay.
I move adjourn.
I saw in the Township Winter Newsletter, it talked about new projects, completed projects, and talking about the Phoenix Mill, it said, "A business and a gathering space," something to that effect. As far as we know, as far as I know, there's strictly that landscape architectural business there, there's not, do we have a public gathering space or banquet space that's open?
I would have to check out with the Building Department on that, I didn't read the news article that you referenced. No, no, I haven't seen that.
I think they may have changed their plans and not opened the banquet space, and that might have become, been because of the pandemic, but I'm not sure, but I don't think that there's a banquet space open in there.
I would concur, but the newsletter is contrary to that.
Might have been old, you know, old information.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Postel, to adjourn the meeting at 8:23, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, adjourned.